Okay, it's one o'clock. Call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, the liberty and justice of our home.
Quick later, I'm sorry, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Not here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Chris Slater here, Supervisor Lesbrunz.
Here.
Is there an approval or discussion? For Article Three, the Agenda?
Shipley moves to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article Four, the purpose of this meeting, to review and discuss the upcoming vacancy effective February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three of the Cascade Charter Township Treasurer position. Including legal counsel review of relevant statutes and discussion regarding the appointment process. Mr. Homier? If you'd like, we just walk us through and we'll ask you some questions, maybe if anybody has any.
Sure.
Go from there.
So, um, the, um, appointment, when there's a vacancy created, um, is determined by statute. That statute's one sixty-eight point three seven zero and three seven zero A. And it sets forth the time for which the board, um, needs to appoint for then a special election is held. So if there's a date certain, for example, if somebody submits a resignation letter that says, like in this case, my, the effective date of my uh, resignation is February twenty eighth. Right? So thirty days prior to that, you can actually appoint somebody who would then take office when that becomes effective. After that, you have forty-five days in which to appoint somebody as well to that position. And it's just a majority vote of the township board, uh, to do that. There's no, um, I, a lot of my clients get caught up in the process sometimes because they'll say things like, well, we need to advertise and take applications and publish notice and you can do all of those things. I'm not suggesting you can't legally, it's not required. So for instance, if you had somebody in mind that the board wanted to appoint today, you could do it today. Um, they wouldn't take, um, office or their office would not become effective until the resignation's effective. Or if the resignation date has passed, they would, you would swear them in and it would become effective immediately within that forty-five day period. Uh, but there's no other process that's legally required.
An approval is just a majority vote? At the board level?
Yeah, a majority of vote of those present, except that, uh, the treasurer, because he's the resigning individual cannot vote.
Questions, thoughts?
You know, we got a lot of good, good candidates out there. And I think it would do the board and residents well to perhaps put a notice out saying, hey, this position is open. Please respond if you're interested within such and such date. I think that there might be some surprises in there and people all in the bushes that will be a good candidate. That's my two cents one.
I, I, I think you're right, John. I, I would just say that the treasurer position is a little more unique. So I think we should have some criteria too. If we put that out there, we, we should say preferably somebody with accounting and finance background who understands budgeting, accounting.
Ab- absolutely.
And, and a bonus would be if they have any, um, prior work experience with municipalities where they understand municipal government, not just standard business accounting. It, it's a bonus. It's not a requirement, but.
I, I absolutely agree, Tom. And then, then we as a board could even if we went through an interview process or just reviewed their credentials, whatever. Pick the best of the lot.
What can we attach? Um, or is, do you have any thoughts on if we just attach the summary of duty, statutory duties?
Yeah, you can probably do that. I'd be careful about trying to pigeonhole that only because, uh, imagine if you will, you get to the next election, right? Anybody can run for that office. You don't have to have any experience. Not that it's not helpful to have experience, obviously, for that position. Uh, but statutorily, it's just simply not required to have any of that experience.
I, I would think that if I were running for that position and I was putting in a resume, so to speak, I would include that. Maybe we don't have to include it in our advertising or our posting of the position, but certainly anybody with with all due respect, common sense would include that in their, their write-up.
Obviously, po- politics, yeah, that's, that one would hope. Be a good thing.
I mean, I wish we all knew of someone, right? But.
We should all be brainstorming, I hope.
As many people as I thought I knew in Cascade. There are thousands I don't know, never seen before. So with that perspective, it's very likely there's someone out there who has the resume that we need and we don't even know them.
And e- even if we got like, if we got a hundred resumes and said, I want the job. We could pare that down to six or something and if we wanted to call them in and, and talk to them. We don't have a rush. It sounds like from what our legal beagle was telling us, we don't have a rush. I've got to do this tonight or by the end of the week or anything.
But we do have forty-five days.
Correct.
We, we did this before twice for the treasurer and twice for the clerk. That's how Sue's here. And even though we advertised that we didn't have that many people apply. I think we had three for the clerk. Or? Two.
You're seeing double Jim.
Two fingers.
No, we had three.
Oh, okay.
We had a neighbor of Ken's, we had you and.
Oh, right. I knew that. I knew that. Forgotten about her.
Um. One thing I want to ask you, Mike. Um, when we interviewed before, we asked the candidate that we selected the board, uh, if they'd be willing to run for election in the general election coming up in twenty-four. Uh, is that appropriate? I mean, we felt that we took the time to interview somebody and they were a good candidate. We wanted to know that they weren't just interesting and, uh, filling out Ken's term, but would run for reelection. Is that okay?
I think it's a, I don't think the question itself is prohibited. Um, so you can ask that question, obviously, that may ultimately determine how you might vote. But I think the board ultimately has a lot of discretion on who it decides to appoint.
Okay.
That can't be a deal breaker.
You will have about fifty-eight days from today in order to appoint somebody.
And that'll go fast.
Yeah.
And then I know we can't, it's not required, but I hope we could all agree that i- if there's any upcoming absences or anything, that it's generally a good idea that every board member hopefully is able to attend when we make the decision.
Yeah, I, I think that that's important that we as a board are congealed in our decision.
If there's any up, yeah, I just even if it's at a special meeting that we do the, the best we can to make it, that all six of us can be there at the same time when we make the decision.
Now, one thing that might be helpful since we don't have committees, is if you appointed an ad hoc committee to review applications, because if you have three people, we did it before as personal finance. We narrowed it down and then we brought recommendations to the board and the board got to interview.
I, it's okay, but I don't want to limit people. I mean, if you want that, I can do it, but I don't, I think, I don't want to, I think you guys all should be able to see everything the same as everybody else.
I mean, it just might be harder to get us all together to interview somebody.
Well, could, could we make that decision, Jim, as we go down the road and say, we only end up with three people that say, hey, I'm willing.
Yep.
Then we don't need a subcommittee. And if we end up with thirty people, then it's something that we can do.
Good point. I like that.
Ben, any thoughts?
Uh, so my first thought is maybe a conversation about whether you guys want to do this at regular meetings or at special meetings. One of the things that Katie and I can do is sit down and put together kind of a, a timeline and a process in short order, based on the conversation today, to bring back to the board meeting on the twenty-second, so you guys can kind of bless it. But as we're plotting out those dates, I guess I'd like to have a, some feedback, whether you guys want to dedicate special meetings to that, or if you want to do it as part of our regular board meeting schedule.
I have no issue with special meetings. I think that we got enough stuff on our plate during our, our regular meetings. I said, I don't have any objections to special meetings.
The twenty, I don't either.
Regular meetings, uh, we got enough controversy and issues going on right now.
The twenty-second's gonna be a heavy.
Um, Wednesday nights still work good for me, Ben. I mean, anytime after seven, I'm not working, so doesn't matter what date, but evenings work best for me.
So did you guys in the past do just call and ask people to come for interviews and?
No, I think, as I remember, uh, we advertised and then we didn't get that many. Um, we got, let's see, when Brenda resigned. Could I can kind of can't remember. But then, you know, clerk, when Sue took over, we had three people. When we interviewed for treasurer the first time, we had two or three. And, um, oh gosh, what was her name? Margie Dude, Dode. Remember her?
I remember the name.
You, well. She, we hired her and then she went to Hope Network or someplace else. And then we interviewed and hired again. But I don't think any one time in the four times that I've been involved in it, we had that many candidates that applied. Because, you know, you, you're gonna want a township resident and and, um, you know, there just, there just aren't that many.
Yeah, but for a clerk and treasurer, it's harder because you want skills or supervisor and trustees.
You don't have to know anything.
No, you just get to.
It's.
You can fake it and bark.
Sounds like based on what Jim just said, traditionally that we won't have this huge bullies of people coming forward.
Cause somebody wants to do the treasurer, they'll probably say, well, you know, I don't have the, even though you may not mention the skills, Mike, I don't think if you're looking for a treasure, they're gonna think they're gonna be able to do the job without some kind of background.
Right.
Good point.
Yeah, I think I would like to go down Mr. Homier's line there. If they're qualified to run for the position in a general election, let them apply. It's our job to fix it and ferret it out at an interview, so. I don't want to have, I mean, I know people with accounting degrees that don't do accounting. They own businesses, but they're fully qualified.
Right. What are the, so Mike, statutory duties of treasurer, just as best you can recite them.
Um, well, I've got actually a whole list of them. Um, so we, some, some time ago, I don't have it with me, but uh, we kind of separated out the statutory duties for the supervisor, the treasurer and the clerk. Because sometimes I, maybe I shouldn't say this, sometimes I have a case right now where the clerk has sued the township board. And so, and it has to do with the statutory duties and whether or not the board has infringed on those duties that are otherwise given to the clerk by statute. And so
Interesting.
Um, it's not a bright line sometimes, um, in terms of what those are. But we've got a, I've got an outline together of those relevant statutory duties, so I can get that to you and and take a look. But, uh, you know, traditionally, the treasurer is the one who, um, is getting, collecting all of the tax payments and doing that. And then the clerk is the one that's writing all the checks and the between them, they sort of interact all the time, right? Cause the clerk is responsible for the journals and ledgers. And so, but there's, then you have a finance department, so there's interaction with all these different groups all the time.
I would just caution that our communication infrastructure is a lot more robust since the last time we did this, so I wouldn't be surprised if we do get more people than we've applied than we traditionally have in the past. Just because we more have more avenues to get the information out that there's an opportunity.
Great. That's good.
I'll add to, um, at least, and I, I skipped over, uh, three seventy A, three seventy A. So the, the person that you appoint will serve the remainder of the term. That's not always the case, but it depends on the timing. It just so happens that the timing here would mean that that person would serve until the next election cycle. If it was earlier, say twenty twenty-one, they would have only served until the election in twenty-two.
Right.
But because we're past twenty-two into twenty-three, they now serve the remainder of the term.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Thoughts, advice while we have you here? Your expertise? Have you seen it done really well or I'm sure you've seen it done poorly?
Um, no, I think all of them are basically done well, right? Because what happens, um, and Timmy, you mentioned this, is you get a bunch of application and then you start to ferret them out. And it becomes really clear on who's qualified and who's not. And so, you know, I would just suggest that if you're, you know, most of my clients, when they go through this, they put out a notice and say, submit, you know, your, um, your C B or your resume, right, by this date. And then you can get a pretty good idea looking at them, who's qualified and who's not.
Ben, out of curiosity, and Mr. Legal Beagle, this would be for you too, but if we had a, um, a regular employee like Jessica maybe, that says, I'd like the position, would there be conflict with that?
Uh, well, not, not in the application itself, right? Now, once they're appointed, then we're gonna have to figure out whether that would still be compatible with whatever duties they had as an employee and whether they could fulfill both. Right? But to some degree, I would say that it's likely incompatible to the extent that depending on what it is, how that oversight is by the board, right? Cause you can't oversee your own position.
Right.
And that becomes the incompatibility.
Okay. So I would just offer too, that I know the last time, uh, we did this, I did get some feedback from the public that you know, they, they said, well, the board shouldn't have made this appointment. It just should have gone to the general electorate so they could pick anybody, right? Um, and you know, one of the arguments against that is that if it goes to a special election, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but if it goes to a special election, not everybody can then just put in and, and file to be on the election.
Right.
The way the statute is written is that the county clerk will go to the Kent County Republican Party, Kent County Democratic Party, and they'll say, give us a candidate. And those parties each have an opportunity to put one candidate on the ballot, and then those are the people that, that run. Um, at least that's my interpretation of the statute.
Yeah.
So.
I don't, I don't like, I don't like that idea at all, because I think that there, there's a whole lot more
That's why we.
Quality out there than just somebody that's appointed by my Republican Party.
I don't, I don't have ever had a board not be able to arrive at a selection.
Thank you. That's encouraging.
And they, the clerk, if it comes to that, the county clerk through that process with the county board, they appoint. Right?
No, it's a special election.
No.
They go on the ballot.
Right. What ballot?
Special. They want a special election.
Oh, you do?
The next special election within, it has to be further than seventy days from the when the applicants.
A special election must be held on the next regular election date that is not less than sixty days after the deadline for submitting nominees under this section or seventy days after the deadline for submitting nominees under this section, if the next regular election date is in the even year, August primary or the general November election.
So that pushes it out quite a ways.
So we pay for that?
Question.
Oh, yeah.
Michael, do, does township administer that election or county?
No, I think the township would.
Okay.
Because it's only the township electors that are voting.
Right. So the county tells us what to do, but then we still have to do it all. So it's like the worst of worst.
So we don't get to pick who's gonna be running?
Although.
We don't want to go down that road.
No. That's why Mike said it never happens.
Let's not.
And pay for it.
Find somebody.
We don't.
Yeah, right.
I have enough faith in my peers here that we can do the job.
I agree.
Yeah.
I do too.
Should we give it a couple of weeks to put it out there for people to apply and then?
I would, I mean, make it fair so that people at least know it's out there. I'd say a couple of weeks and then, and give them a cutoff date to get it, get there. I, I want to do the job, get back into the township.
I mean, is this something, Ben, maybe you, you post on our website, it says, here are the responsibilities of the treasurer, as we've, as Mike described, we've got them defined. Here are the responsibility of the treasurer, please submit your, your resume and a, a letter saying why you would want to serve this position.
Yeah, and we've put it out in the same channels that we typically use with, with Hunter. So Katie and I would put something together. We'd get it out on our social media pages. We posted it on our website, obviously, and we put out a press release. Um, uh, we can get it. Probably not in the paper newsletter, but certainly in the e-newsletter that we come out. So, you know, a lot of opportunities for, to let people know that the position is open.
What are your thoughts on the dates, Ben?
So again, I, I'd like to sit down with Katie and kind of work backwards, uh, and figure out some dates that make sense and bring it back to you guys at the board meeting on the twenty-second to, to bless, to go forward.
Oh, okay, next.
Let's just. We could do that. It's not that, we need to get that kind of, it's not that hard.
I don't want to get too far into March.
No, I think we should just.
I'd like to get it.
Pretty easy.
End of February.
Yeah, I'd like to get the application deadline before the end of February.
Well, Ken's last.
Work through it in March.
March one is two weeks from today.
Yeah, I want to get this.
What's that, Wednesday? Obviously. What's the last day in February? The twenty-eighth?
Uh huh.
That's also Ken's last day. What is that on a calendar?
Tuesday.
So what's the Friday before that?
The twenty-fourth? That's a week from Friday.
Is that too soon? I will tell you, I got a call, an email and a phone call from someone interested in serving on the board over, um, the holidays and I, and, uh, it wasn't for a specific position. And I called the person back and then I also looked and it was in, or emailed, I think I emailed weird guy. I don't even think he may have been a township resident. And it was the kind of thing where I kept his voicemail and his email just, I was gonna delete him, like just forget it ever happened, but then and then I can thought about like the guy was so then I kept it for proof in case something did happen down the road. So I'll just say the, you can, I, we need good candidates, but it's also like.
Oh, prior to this incident, have you had any other stalkers?
Maybe he did, but then to his credit, he did back off, but the guy was I'm not even, it just.
That's scary.
That is.
It was scary. It was scary.
I think if, if, if we look, we've really got till roughly April ten. So we back scheduled to that, we probably want as many resumes as we can get by, say, March ten gives us or, or earlier, but we could pick a date, say, you know, please submit your information, but preferably by March five or something reasonable.
I'd like to get it done in February. We got a lot of work to do and then with March.
February is a very short time.
People who are thinking about it are thinking about it. And if we know of anybody who's, I mean, it'd be really great if the person had common sense, financial background and thought like we did. And didn't, I mean, it's not but, so we should already be brainstorming, right? Which is why we're still sitting here, right? Cause it's really hard find people as great as we are. But we should all be.
Well, actually greater, because we want them to have financial background.
Exactly.
And that's only Jim right now with a strong financial background.
And we want him to have a witty sense of humor, but not talk too much. Vote with us and know. So anyways, we really want to send out this wide net and get that guy.
I think it's logical be halfway between the white-haired guy's idea and Ben's idea, maybe by the end of the first week of March.
Is that me?
March three.
We gotta be able to look up their Facebook accounts, two weeks and two days.
At the most.
If you make it seem too long. Right. By making it a shorter window, you create demand.
We don't know what's coming after that, that due date.
Mandatory action. Mandatory action, I say.
Yep.
Okay, March third.
All right, Ben's got more.
I would just, I just want to put out there that we're probably not going to be able to put out the communication to the public until Tuesday. Um, cause we need a couple of days to put it together. Monday's a holiday. We're not in the office. Um, so I would push to have
What else?
Information out.
Oh, President's Day?
President's Day.
What's today? Can, can Jessica, I don't want to put you on the spot. Is it possible to put it up on the website? No?
Well, I guess I just, I want to get the stuff from Mike so we have an idea of what the treasurer, you know, to put together. We don't have I think last time around, we just said, put in application. So I can certainly put it up on the website that says, hey, apply for treasurer, but it's gonna take at least a little bit of time to put together. We want to put what the treasurer's responsibilities and roles are that we already have defined.
Must make it intimidating.
Chrissy help?
And, and I'm always open for anybody's help.
Just, just, I mean, for speediness.
Why, why don't we put it for the Friday of that first week of March?
Yeah.
What's that?
Three.
March three.
Yeah.
So that gives you, yeah, you tell, please submit by end of business day, March third.
Okay, so here's the thing, who knows, like Jim, you might get somebody's submission, you know what I mean? Like people, there's no, they're not applying for an actual job through the township, so who knows? How do we want to be specific?
If, if some amazing person appeared to one of us.
We, yes.
We can easily separately or with the others, interview that person.
Right.
We have the right to appoint anybody we want. And if somebody wonderful appears, we can do that. We're not constrained by resumes by March third, you know what I'm saying?
Correct. It would be nice though to have a resume just for, for residence save, why didn't, you know, so we can point to something, if somebody says, why did you appoint that person? Were they, were they your personal friend?
Oh, yeah.
They have these criteria.
Totally.
I'd like to go through the deadline.
And we're gonna get a great candidate on March.
Yeah, we will. Right. There we go. Okay, March third's the, sounds like the date.
I was gonna put on there directing resumes and all the ad, advertising materials to Katie, unless you guys want them to go somewhere else. I figure she can compile them.
Great idea. Yes. And if, and if someone goes through here, we could just send them onto Katie.
Yep.
Somebody contacts us, say, hey, talk to the boss.
Mm-hmm. And then we'll figure out how to meet and talk to people.
And we should, we should have, if, if you have further questions, please contact, and maybe that's you, Ben, because you know, some, one thing that I think any person's gonna ask is how much time is this? Is this a full-time job? Do I have to sit in the office, you know, three days a week, four days a week? And I think you have a feel for what the position requires. Um, cause tha- that's one of the questions I'm sure that applicants may have.
So I, I've gotten that question in the past from before, from people that are just interested, you know, running during elections and stuff. I'd say I try to keep it as factual as possible, because somebody may choose to do the treasurer's position different than it's being done now.
Right.
Just because Ken deferred a lot of his responsibilities to the deputy doesn't mean that the next person has to or wants to. Um, so I'm certainly willing to answer factual questions.
Right.
I don't think it's appropriate for me to give them direction on how they should operate.
No, and that's not what I mean. I'm just saying, they're gonna have questions. Is this a full-time job? What is it really? What, here I see are the responsibilities. You just try to act, answer factually what you can. I, I just think it's nice to have a contact.
Statutorily, they only have to be in the office one day, right?
A week.
They don't have a year in the office.
Or.
Two days a year.
Two, two days?
Or maybe three.
Oh, because we collect twice a year?
Oh.
Cause it's the last day of each collection and then I think the last day of the calendar year too.
Yeah, I'd have to say, it's a minimal.
Yeah.
As far as the deputy treasurer, is everything set to um, Ken appointed her when he, like with his when, with his reelection? So she's set as far as, do we need to do anything that way?
Um, no, so the.
Or do they get to pick their own?
Yes. So the de- the deputy serves at the pleasure of the treasurer, right? And so depending if they want that person or somebody different, they can appoint somebody different. Compensation for that. So if the treasurer can't perform because of those reasons, deputy treasurer fills in, can do everything except for vote. Okay?
Doesn't have to be a resident?
Uh, no, doesn't have to be a resident. But anything other than that, if the deputy is assisting the treasurer in the performance of those statutory duties and the treasurer is not otherwise disabled, absent, sick or dead, then the board has to agree on those additional functions.
If you die, does that automatically mean that you vacated your position and we get to reappoint?
Yes, create the vacancy.
Yes.
So I will go out on a limb and say, I think Oksana is fantastic. And is wonderful.
But it's up to the new treasurer.
I know, that's why I'm just saying, that's where we get to pick the new treasurer. So if anyone has anything.
But we redefined her position. What do we call it now?
So, yeah, we did that. So she has two positions now. She has, she's a deputy treasurer and then the manager of treasury services. And her deputy treasurer position title is uncompensated. So if the treasurer came in and wanted to appoint a different deputy treasurer, the board still has the ability to retain Oksana under her administrative duties.
Cool.
Oh.
And determine the salary of the new deputy treasurer, which could be zero.
Yes. In fact, it is zero right now. So if you wanted to compensate a new deputy treasurer, you would have to change that.
Okay.
Which is.
That's the poison pill.
Because we have no control over the deputies, it's. Our way of protecting the position, their position, so that if somebody new comes in. All that knowledge doesn't walk out the door.
Which makes sense, that's tricky. It's very tricky. Is there anything we shouldn't do?
Well. I can think of a lot of things you shouldn't do.
That's a lot of, um.
But overall, right, I mean, your function is to fill the vacancy with somebody you believe is. Qualified to do that, and you have broad discretion in who that person is. Can't be an unlawful reason why you don't pick somebody, but other than that, it's pretty broad.
Define unlawful.
But you just didn't say it out loud.
For instance, if you said, well, we're not gonna appoint that person because they're Hispanic, right? That would be unlawful. Now, nobody would ha- ever say that, or at least, I hope not, but, you know, those are unlawful reasons.
Keep going.
Gender, sex.
Yeah, any of those, any of those. Characteristics that are protected by law, right? So for non-discriminatory reasons. But if you said, well, look, we're not gonna pick A because A has no. Financial background, and this is a treasure position where B has financial background, completely lawful.
Do we even need to, it's a motion by the majority of the board, approval, does it even need a reason behind it? But deliberations are all public, right?
So like, um, some of my clients, they do interviews of people, right? So they'll whittle it down to three. They might do those interviews, um, you know. It's kind of weird, though, because when you do those interviews, right, you can't exclude the other participants, so. They then get a sense of the questions that you're asking, right? Depending on the order. So you might draw that order at random or alphabetically or whatever it is. But even then, you can't exclude people from the meeting, you can ask them, would you step out? And they can volunteer to step out.
Public meeting.
Yeah. They might just tune in to YouTube.
Yeah. Interesting.
If the board asked them to step out of the meeting and they refused, could they not appoint that person based on the fact that they?
You would, but you'd never say it out loud. You, that would kind of set the tone for the next, you know, two years, right? Yeah.
Well, amazingly, we have an opportunity to pick someone super qualified, which when they're running for the position, we don't.
That's right, I mean, no qualifications to run for the position. None, other than you have to be a registered elector.
Right.
That's, that's why I don't like the special election option, right?
So if you think of this at the township level, then think about the county, the state, the federal. There are good, pros and cons.
Yeah, now, you know, I do have some. Clients where the boards don't agree on those appointments, and some who wanted to push it to a special election. So that the people could decide, but I don't recommend it, it's a costly decision, why would you do that?
Well, and we should be, and we'll pick up times, I think everybody agrees that we all, all the six of us want to participate, so. We'll be cognizant of that when we schedule. Times.
We, we asked you, Sue, if you would retain a deputy if you were selected. We asked you if you would retain the deputy if we selected you, and you said yes.
Absolutely.
That's okay to ask that question, right?
Yeah, I don't think, um, it's harmful to ask. Statutorily, they can decide otherwise, even if they tell you something else.
Right. And it's kind of smart to keep that person. Especially if the elected one coming in has no clue what they're doing.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking the time to, um. Keep us on track.
Yeah, you know, it's an important decision, but really, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an easy one process-wise. So, you know, if you can. Select, you know, whittle it down to three or four, or how, however many you wanna interview. Um, then, you know, you hold those interviews, pass a motion, and swear the person in, and they're in.
You know what's tricky is, so it's a political choice, right, by motion, but. It's a board decision, so all the deliberations have to be public, like, that's kind of, so legally, it may not be that complicated, but just the process is important that we're meeting. Together and doing it the right way. Now we just have to all agree.
I agree.
Whatever, four of us have to agree. Hope we get it right.
Hope it's not a method.
Yeah, I mean, that is the other thing, right? You're stuck with whoever you appoint until the next election, so.
I'm naturally very cynical, so that might play out well in this situation.
You know, then at the next election, you might end up with that person and you might not. Cause that's when somebody is likely to challenge that person, even if they run for office.
Yeah, awkward, we'll see you in two years, when everyone's vulnerable.
Right.
Great, um, do we want to, or should we do just some motion to set the basic parameters what we did, or no?
I don't think really, we really need to, because.
I don't wanna force it, it's just. Yeah.
And you, you don't, you don't need to unless you're going to set that, what was it, uh, March third. Um, deadline as a hard deadline for applications, which is Friday, two weeks from Friday.
I make motion that we set March third as the deadline, end of business day for all applicants.
Second, it's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater. To, um, put the deadline for accepting applications for the position of treasurer at March second, end of the business day. March third, sorry, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Any further discussion?
I think we're gonna clarify what the duties are with the statute.
Oh, yeah.
Where and who to apply and.
Mr. Mike and Ben are gonna have, take care of that, and our hands are washed.
Can we take it from there? We'll, we'll look at the two or three people.
What if that guy pops up again? I'll tell you which one. You know what, if it does, I'm not even gonna need to tell.
Shipley makes motion with all the business of this special meeting concluded.
Wait, wait, we have public comment.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Article five, public comments, is there anyone virtually, Ms. Stein? That wants to comment? Oh, okay, you're good.
Okay, John, no, go ahead.
Just a second.
Okay. Shipley makes a motion that since the business of this special session has been concluded, that we adjourn.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley to adjourn, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Isn't it kind of weird to oppose your own motion?